Thank you.
Have it.
All right. Do we have anyone signed up for the public comment?
No, ma'am.
Haven't.
Okay, thank you. So, the public hearing is about to begin. I'm going to turn it over to our attorney.
Go ahead and open. Yeah, go ahead and open. Go ahead and open.
Open the public hearing.
Okay, the board probably remembers we had a discussion about reasonable limits on the public hearing. At our last meeting, at the last meeting, 160A-81 of the general statute does provide for reasonable limitations on the public hearing, including the maximum time allotted to speakers, providing for designation of spokespersons for groups, persons supporting or opposing the same positions, providing for the selection of delegates from groups of persons supporting the same positions, if we are over capacity, which we're not, and providing for maintenance and order and decorum in the conduct of the hearing, which is always the case in any meeting. In this case, the mayor pro tem has the right to remind folks to be nice, basically. So, we invited that, the staff developed following reasonable limitations that tracks that statute that I just paraphrased. Number one, the maximum number, I mean, the maximum time allotted to each speaker is five minutes per speaker. We are encouraging the designation of spokespersons for groups of persons supporting the same or supporting or opposing the same positions, so that's encouraged, it's not required. Providing for the selection of, well, that one is inapplicable because we're not over capacity. And as I mentioned, providing for the maintenance of order and decorum in the conduct of the hearing. The board commissioners, the mayor pro tem may take whatever action is necessary to maintain order and decorum to ensure fair and orderly proceedings, including asking individuals to leave the room if needed. Of course, we don't expect anything like that here tonight. Just a few words on the order of the presentation that will take place tonight. The town staff will present the requested street closure, including the location of the property affected and any other matters relevant for consideration by the board. Second, the applicant shall present any pertinent information on the requested street closure. The board commissioners may ask questions of the applicant and, of course, of the staff too. And then, any other interested parties may speak to the street closure request for up to five minutes per speaker. All such parties shall identify themselves with a record prior to speaking, including their name and address, so we'll get a record of who all speaks tonight. Then the board commissioners may ask questions of the interested parties, and if any, and then the board will give staff directions as to next steps. I do want to add a couple of things that are not clear about this. During the applicant's presentation, we're not recommending that each speaker be limited to five minutes or that the applicant be limited to five minutes. And also, for the board's information and for the public, this is a legislative public hearing, which means, as opposed to a quasi judicial public hearing. So therefore, members of the audience cannot, and everyone here is addressed in the board, and we're not giving opportunity for cross examination. If a citizen has a question about the application, they can pose it to the board, and the board, if appropriate, may choose to ask the applicant to respond to them. If you have any questions, you may, I'll try to answer them. Is that covered?
Yeah.
And you make one more question. General, what would you be trying on the five?
Yes, the five minutes. It's just been told that the town court will be monitoring the comments to let us all know if you're willing to somewhat hit the five minute mark.
Okay, the first person. So, Jack. All right, I'm sorry, Jack.
You're here. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, board members, Mr. Manik. So, in your packet that was provided to the board, from start page 28, the memo the staff provided, we went over this quite a bit, but I did want to just highlight a few things that are necessary to govern this public hearing. One is location, so the, how many things are there?
Jack, you may want to mention too, the page numbers that you referenced are at the top.
Yes.
Not at the bottom, those are not supposed to be printed. So, when a page number is referenced, it will be at the top?
The page 28. Start with the location. First Street is unfortunate East Third Street. We've also got map obviously associated with that, and they were on the following pages. East Third Street is going to stop and start at the point where Mount Airy owns the property, which is what the former accounting property was, including what was added with the Bill's Motoring and so forth. So, it's not all of Third Street, it's just a small segment there. East Fifth Street, it's a little more defined. East Fifth is from North Avenue, back where it intersects with those streets. That's the portion we're talking about for East Fifth. And then Johnson Avenue is from US 64, 11th Street, and stops at East Fifth, where Johnson intersect with Fifth. So, that's the portion of the streets that being requested to be closed by Mount Airy Farms. In the packet also, you'll see concept rock for relocation. A third street that is not necessarily closing is also street closing with relocation of third, using North Avenue to connect 164. So, North Avenue was being extended south to connect back to where East Third Street. We also provided some patch maps, so we have that for photo illustration. There were two letters that were provided previously at previous meetings, I wanted to include those. They had some items, end of those letters, DOT, and to the town that were from Mount Airy's consultant. They have agreed requirements, or improvements, I should say, that Mount Airy Farms agreed to complete as part of this request.
Jack, are you on page 36 now?
I'm still on page 28, I'm reading off my list, and I'm talking about those things that are under this. If there's some specific, Commissioner Fahey, I can have you with.
I was just trying to follow through on the packet, I thought you were on page 36 and 37.
Also attached in this packet was resolutions that were adopted on June 7th, to set this public hearing in four, let's say, June 7th, to set this public hearing in season. To do that, we have a newspaper, four weeks, put signs of it on all these streets, at least two signs per street. And we sent letters that were on the property. We sent letters to those that are joined with the section that we discussed to be closed, and we also included others beyond that one. And so, those lists are in your packets, which property we want to see next. Next letter that we announced a few days ago was a declaration of retention of water and sewer lines, which was sent directly to Mount Airy as part of the, one of our process statutes taken. And we do have water and sewer lines in these street segments. There's a timeline, timeline just surmises the activity from day one, the decisions arrived and planning offers to we got here today. So, I'm just going through the detail of that, and that's just gives you a snapshot of what we've accomplished. Now, provide next steps, and following, well, staff is following procedures that are provided on 160A-1099. And our next step is to help this public hearing with the doing now, and then receive direction with this. Town will follow closure of the public hearing or doing the public hearing. And we can help with that direction once the public hearing is, and so if you've got questions, let us know, but we can help with once the public, I'm just finished regarding what I can say.
Any questions for Jack? Sorry. Anyone from that area that wants to speak, stand up, please, state your name and your phrase.
Hi there. My name is Kathy Bassett, I'm the Director of Translations and Community Relations for Mount Airy Farms. And my address, our corporate address is in Millsboro, Delaware. We are proud to be here today representing Mount Airy Farms, which is a family owned and operated business. It's been around for more than 100 years. Mount Airy is now the fourth largest chicken company in the country. And our processing plant and our two hatcheries here in Siler City are an important part of our success. As you know, our plant opened in the spring of 2019, and we now employ about 1,800 people. We contract with more than 160 local farmers to grow our own chicken. And we partner with numerous local businesses to help us produce that chicken. We didn't ask them all to speak here tonight, so it's very rare to have them. We've also been a strong community partner here in Siler City, helping bring back the Spring Chicken Festival as the presenting sponsor. And it's been our pleasure to work with community groups like Habitat Humanity and the Boys and Girls Club, Child Liberty, so many others. During COVID, when our local grocery stores ran out of chicken, we hosted community chicken sales. We partnered with St. Louis Church, and we wanted to make sure that Siler City residents were fed first. But we're here tonight to discuss the future of East Third Street, a vital area of town that runs and takes into our plan. As soon as we opened our facility, we came here to us that traffic along East Third Street was a major safety concern. We began to devise a solution, we think that fits the town, our neighbors, the residents who use the road, and the company. And I want to publicly thank the commissioners and the staff here for your patience during this process. We've asked questions, we've listened, we've met with local businesses, and we continually work to find a solution that works. This new road will cost the company about $6 million to build. And it's part of our continued investment in Siler City. If you want to let me know, we're here to stay and grow, and we want to continue to be a community partner in this town. So, we're here to show you the 3D version of what this road's going to look like tonight. But before I do that, I just want to take a moment and introduce the person of our company who's here, Philip Quiler. He'd like to say a few words.
Hi, Kathy. My name is Philip Quiler, and I'm president of Mount Airy Farms, and my address is Millsboro, Delaware. That's our corporate address. So, once again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all tonight. I really want to thank you once again for the warm welcome we received here in Siler. And I think as I've mentioned to some of you before, I've been coming down to our plant when I came down from 96, and they come down to that Lumber Bridge plant, there was none of that time. And many times, we would go from Lumber Bridge and drive up to our feed mill there in Candor. And as we went through Siler City after the closure of Mount Airy, we kind of wondered if there was anything we could do with that plant. I can tell you, we never imagined the plant coming to go the way it has. About $200 million later, 1,800 jobs. We think we have a good looking project, we're proud of it, and want to have a facility that you're proud of and had in your community as well. So, we're excited to be here, we're proud to be here, looking forward to bright future together. But tonight, we're here to talk about the rerouting of Third Street, and why we're really asking you tonight to make that change. For us, people first, things first. And in this case, it's not just people that work for us, but it's people in the community at large, because it has become a safety issue. All right, that's our number one priority, is keeping our people safe. And we have an initiative in our company we call Goal Zero. The goal is having zero accidents every year. And it really takes a proactive approach, going for our facilities, trying to look out front, see how a situation may turn south, and what can we do to prevent that in the future. And as you look at Third Street, and you know that over 450 crossings are there right now of our vehicles, of big trucks. You can easily conceive a situation where something they have. And using that same Goal Zero methodology, would rather look ahead and prevent something than look back and ask what would be different. So, that's why we're here tonight. I can tell you, throughout this process, we've really tried to reach out to the community, any businesses that might be affected, any individual households. And I hope you can see that in the changes that we've made since the project originally started, even since our last meeting. So, we know that we have our internal customers, we have external customers. This community is, in this space, our external customer, and we want to give you a good product, something that you can be proud of, a good gateway into the city, something that looks nice, and, of course, takes care of home safety of the community and our board. We're excited about it, I hope you guys will be after this. I know we've met several times, and we would really appreciate any opportunity to ask about this, and maybe get a vote for next meeting. So, thank you, Kathy.
Could I ask that people lean into the microphone, because we're having problems. Lean into the mic.
Got it, thank you. Keep that tip, so. Okay, next, we would like to show you a short video that we think is going to help you visually see what this new proposed road will look like. Can I cut the light out? That'll be open.
It's already moving.
Will you cut that light off? Rowan, did you cut that on?
Almost every day in Siler State, we turn up a truck truck to use the Mount Airy Farms' processing plant, carrying chicken around the world. Some trucks bring live birds, the plant will finish product goes out the door in refrigerated trucks. East Third Street is a busy place.
Yeah, actually, it's not been loud, but it'll go sometimes.
Can you tell the lights, is that light?
Almost every day in Siler State, truck traffic enters and leaves the Mount Airy Farms' processing plant, carrying chicken around the world. Some trucks bring live birds, the plant will finish product goes out the door in refrigerated trucks. East Third Street is a busy place, and often cars must wait as trucks go back and forth across the road. Sometimes cars dart around the truck, creating dangerous situations.
Will you say that or so?
Before, approximately 510 feet west of where this is. There, a full access traffic signal will allow vehicles to safely enter maintenance crew, or speed around a slight curve, bypassing Mount Airy and break back into downtown. All along the East Third Street, the company will install sidewalks and landscaping as part of the purification project. Along the plant's perimeter, Mount Airy will install privacy fences with landscaping for additional screen. This curve design was the result of public land with police and fire officials who used the road. The design also considers businesses, but the benefit from enhanced visibility. At Mount Airy, safety is always our number one priority, and our Goal Zero program means we're always striving for zero consequences. Making these improvements to the roads around our facility will allow Mount Airy and our neighbors in Siler City to work together to achieve that goal.
All right, hopefully everyone's eyes are hearing that. We want to emphasize that one of the loudest concerns we heard from local business owners was just to make sure we don't close one road before the other one is open. And we agree, and that won't happen. We also want to let you know that we've decided to widen East Fifth Street at the connection of East Third Street. We heard that concern at our last meeting with the council. And we left that meeting and immediately went to East Fifth Street to check it out. And we discussed it, we reviewed those plans, and we've agreed that while it adds to the additional cost of the project, it's going to help make that road more accessible for area residents who are likely now going to use that road to get the highway system more. So, I did want to point that out to you all, and I'm proud of listening and making changes and reacting to what you, to the community's needs. So, with that, I just want to introduce Lucas Helms, who's with Randi Kemp and Associates, our traffic experts, just to go over a few more details about the road.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Helms, Randi Kemp Associates, that are corporate offices in Raleigh, New York. We have been working on this for the past two or three years in terms of the road closures. It's kind of how it's worked in the package, the closure of these roads, it really is a relocation. I know we've been in front of you guys multiple times, with the public. We have been highly communicative with DOT and the town staff to find the best solution for this relocation that it kind of needs all parties. What we've come up with is a full access signal. We're rerouting essentially where North Avenue is, so Third Street will make this slight curve. That's been under, a lot of different alternatives have been discussed, with roundabout, a T intersection. And what you see before you today is based off a lot of coordination with commissioners, DOT staff, and what they believe in the setup as well. And it certainly, we think this is a pretty, a pretty good design for relocation. It meets all the boxes that we're trying to check. We're adding sidewalk protection access along the corridor. We're adding a three lane section for queuing of cars. And as we mentioned before, what this does by the closure is it takes 450 proximal trucks that are jumping back and forth between and across Third Street, and remove some from conflict points. And that's certainly something from a safety concern that we really look forward to going with this relocation. One other thing, in addition to the three lane sections, adding turn lanes. But they didn't order into the project, based off coordination with the DOT. And as we mentioned before, with Fifth Street, we are widening that to allow, it's very narrow street now. We went out there and looked at it, and we're going to widen that within our, right at the connection to allow more, you know, one or two cars to stack, so cars can still enter and exit. As it's more than likely that those cars are behind Lake Avenue. And back down Fifth Street, we use this access to the signal to go westbound on US 64. With that, we'll be here to kind of answer any questions, and certainly, want you guys to know that we heard all your concerns, and tried our best to come up with a cooperative agreement that works for all parties, so thank you.
I have a question. My concern is the traffic that's going to be detoured from Third Street, because people won't go there, to Raleigh Street. And Raleigh Street is pretty much packed now, especially when school starts in the morning and the afternoons. So, did you do any type of traffic study for Raleigh Street?
So, I'm going to kick it over to Nate Vogel, who's our traffic. I'm more along the design side, but he can answer that.
That's right.
Hi, I'm Nate Vogel, Randi Kemp Associates, 5808 American Place in Raleigh. We did do a traffic study, and we did look along the Raleigh Street corridor to look at potential impacts there. And that study was reviewed by the DOT, as well as the third party consultant that the town selected to review the study, and they all agree with our findings.
Okay, so, I think my question is, because school has not officially been in, you know, a year and a half, two years, the traffic wasn't like it would flow this August, so.
So, we were able, this has been a multiyeared project, and so we actually had some historic traffic counts that we were able to use.
Like from what years?
That's a verback, I believe it was 2016 originally that we have. So, as well.
So, you had like four years?
Yeah, the traffic.
So, what was the findings on that as far as flow goes every year? I mean, every, like, morning, afternoon, or whatever?
I'm sorry, let me move.
So, what is the flow of traffic?
So, our impacts on Raleigh Street, we found to be fairly negligible, just because the majority of the changes are happening at Third. So, we found that majority of the people that are using Third Street today would essentially just be shifted over to the rerouting.
Now, I'm talking about Raleigh Street. What was the flow of traffic on Raleigh Street?
Do you want the traffic volume?
Per day, yeah.
I'm going to pull that up for you.
Before the pandemic?
Sorry, just have to. So, Raleigh Street, and this is actually a 2019 volume, so again, before the pandemic, that's 6,700 vehicles per day, which is well below the capacity of two line grid. Usually, two line grid will see anywhere from 12,000 to 14,000 vehicles per day is the carrying capacity.
So, you've broken that road, so you know what you're running into. Thank you. I know that someone hit me in the back of that road, so I'm not so sure anyone understands the flow of the traffic of that road. Do you have a question? Do you have a question?
Yeah, and this may be for you, it may be not, but I think as I was, when I was reading through the package, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that there's also part of the proposal right there on Raleigh Street, or the entrance to, parking lot, you know, there's two entrances. I think I remember reading that there's a proposal there to upgrade that, I hate, it's not really an intersection, that, you know, where a lot of traffic had come, come in and out, and there was a, I think I saw a proposal to create a turning lane there, and maybe a third to, you know, because there's definitely a little bit of a problem there when everybody gets out at one time, especially if they want to turn left. I about hit two or three of them, so. But getting that in the package too, and it's not to be, it's not to be done until act of the project is completed.
Yes, sir, that's right. That was something that came up in the traffic study, and in coordination with the town staff and the town consultant. The agreement was that we would look, kind of re-review that after the completion of the realignment, just so that we're not out there having roadbed destruction on two main main roads in town. We wanted to try and clarify the overlapping of the roadwork of. We wanted to try and clarify the overlapping of the roadwork over there.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Smith?
My question would still piggyback, I guess, off of what you all are saying. When you think about, if you're doing the rerouting at that particular, you know, doing that here, and then you have Raleigh Street, is there not a way that Raleigh Street could be taken care of first before the rerouting starts? Because that means that the volume of traffic coming down Raleigh Street is going to increase. And so therefore, morning, afternoon, evening, when people are getting off work, there's going to be a lot of congestion that you haven't thought about until that part.
Yes, so, yes, ma'am. So the Raleigh Street, excuse me, the third street shift in traffic with the rerouting, it would not occur until that road, new road is completed. So until that is completely constructed, we would not shift any traffic. We would not stop the existing traffic along third street. So it would be shifted over once we have that new route completed, if you will. So our exposure impacts to Raleigh Street would be fairly limited because of that.
I have a question. What about the impact of Raleigh Street? Because I know you're a company of the land, how many acres of Raleigh Street?
I...
But they need it, right? Is that true? So what was the impact on Raleigh Street? Does that feel something?
Yes.
Just going to lie it, just say I'm lying it.
So...
So there's a plan somewhere, so what's going to happen in Raleigh Street then?
So I don't know of any plans or any...
Well, I'm saying you might not know of that, but you wouldn't buy land just to say, I bought the land, not have any plans.
So at the time of those plans being forward, we would be back in front of you all, and be able to conduct another traffic study to re-review with any potential other additional impacts that we may have.
Right. So how many acres was that?
I believe thirty-some odd.
Thirty-some odd.
Thirty-seven, thirty-four.
So, is it? Okay. The question I had was relating to GPS. So when construction is completed, do GPS maps need to be updated? And how will old GPS versions recognize the original third street is closed? And then is there any proposed signage in it? We've had the issues with Brookwood Farms, and having to put external signage up, is there anything planned for that?
Yeah, I want to speak for Jack. I believe we spoke briefly about this before. When that road is constructed, rerouted, the town staff, I believe, would reach out to Google Maps and all the other apps, if you will, and have them update their systems. I think that's a fairly big process to kind of change over. And your second question was...
Was there any signage that was going to be needed to say, "closed," you know?
Yes, there'd be way by the signage letting them know that this is your route to downtown, just to have familiar aspects that happened in town.
So I guess my question would be, let's do a scenario that you cross third street, and we have rerouted, and then we have Raleigh Street, and then the 30 acres that your company has purchased has decided to do something with that, then it just impedes on the traffic on Raleigh Street. So what would be the answer after that?
You know, I don't know that there are, I don't know that there are plans for that property at this point. I don't know. We probably don't, but there's going to eventually be plans, so I don't know. I mean...
Absolutely, absolutely. We don't usually buy property and not touch it. We certainly do buy property without fully knowing what is going to happen, how it becomes available near our facilities. But that's just something that we're going to have to address at that time, and that would be the perfect time to really look at that road and see how we can improve the flow of traffic on that road to make the necessary, whatever the state and city's going to require us at that time.
But now's the time to actually look at it, because we know this is in the future of what's going to happen with the road. Something's going to happen.
Well, we don't know necessarily what the future is going to happen with that property until, I think, we get past this one, then we can turn it over to that one.
But the road is going to become obsolete at that time, for what the traffic could possibly carry with, if you have something on there, especially for the schools, and you have rerouting of third street, you have Raleigh Street, and you have something else going on. I mean, it's going to be an obsolete road, so what do you think?
Well, I don't think there's any plans to do anything with that property anytime soon.
But you do have the property for at least...
Well, we have lots of property for different reasons, and some we don't do anything with, and that's just the nature of buying land. So I don't, I'm not trying to, we're trying to be transparent here, and honestly, there's no plans for that property at this point. So until they decide that whatever is going to do with it, whether an additional parking or a facility or whatever it might be, I just think that that's, you know, we're here to talk about east third street, and I know everybody wants to talk about Raleigh Street, and that's great, we'll talk about that.
But it's a connection. It's not, it's not anything, I mean, you want to talk about east third street, but they have fixed Raleigh Street. It's a connection.
Understood. I just want to read one letter that, which I've submitted for the record. This person wanted to be here tonight, but wasn't able to. And that's Matt Leves, who's the executive director of Chatham County North Carolina Homeless Shelters. And he says, "I'm writing this letter on behalf of Chatham County North Carolina Homeless Shelters, and because of some personal experiences while driving on east third street in Siler City. Unfortunately, I'm not able to attend the public hearing on August 2nd due to prior amendment. I do want to voice my opinion on the project and discuss that then. On several occasions while driving on east third street, I witnessed two near accidents, and was almost involved in one myself, where the truck driver could not see me in his blind spot. Jobs created by Mount Air have greatly benefited our community, but the movement of trucks and personnel in that area which is needed for your operations could be a safety hazard. I admire the proactiveness of Mount Air to correct this. Our organization is fully supportive of rerouting east third street, traffic around this busy section of your business operations for the safety of your personnel and the public trying to get to Highway 64. Mount Air is a strong partner with C C N A C H S in helping feed the people experiencing homelessness. Sincerely, Matt Leves, Executive Director of Chatham North Carolina Homeless Shelters." And there may be other people who are going to speak here tonight, but I did want to read that one in for the record.
This is really just for a point of reference, what we're talking about. We're thinking about Raleigh Street over there, and there's some valid points there. But the thing to keep in mind is, before the first shovel full of dirt and be anything done with, there'll have to be an application and a process that goes through Jack's office. There'll have to be some rezoning, some different things. And that will probably be the time that we will take up that process. And you're not making light of anything else, but that will be tied to the development of that property at whatever time it is or is not done. And I think, as we already said, we're going to address the turning lane situation after we do the, look at the rerouting. Just keep that in mind. I mean, it's just not, it won't just be that way. It will have to be approved by the town and by the board before it ever gets to that point. And the...
Absolutely, thank you.
Is there one else from Mount Air who wants to speak? Okay, so we have several people signed up to speak. The first person is Beverly Goldston. If you would, Ms. Goldston, state your name and address, and...
Good evening to the board.
Hey.
And everybody. I am Beverly Goldston.
Sorry. State your name and address, please.
1894 East Road, South City, North Carolina, New Zealand, 27344. I've been in South City all my life, the town of South City, the city limits, because I grew up here. I now live on Colridge Road, but every day I go through third street. And I have to go to Martin Luther King, or Raleigh Street, they just keep saying it. So let me tell you what I've been observing. If I'm coming from Pittsburgh to the starting station, east to west, what is the conduct of your drivers? Hmm? What is the conduct of the drivers that are down there? I have tuned that horn, beep beep, blurred because of their conduct. They don't wait to get out of traffic. They sitting over here up high, and you're going to tell me that they see the people coming from east, west, on third street? That's a danger. So what is their character of, I feel, the railroad roads over yonder, where we travel? It's putting the people out of the way, the businesses I go to there and whatnot, out of the way. Um, portrait plants and things like that should never have been in the city next to South City in the first place, or any type of, never, never. The order and all of that. School kids get all these buses here. It's going to turn everything around, even to the, uh, parades, trying to get you from one point to the other. Oh, you're looking at a glamorous picture. Oh, it's going to be nice, we're going to be living in Chinatown. You know, how you're going to go to 64, or that's going to 64, they're out there speaking about. I sometimes go to Bojangles many times, and it's chaotic trying to get out of that traffic. Sometimes we ride our way down to Walmart to turn around and hit the cautionary light to get us back. I'm amazed there has not been accident on third street. The so-called the land and money and all that, you're not looking at the conduct of the drivers. I've seen it. I've seen it. They don't care. I'm also speaking of, you know what I'm talking about? The vehicle that's pulling the trailer. So they'll get you one point, they barely get it, fall out the way to another. Cautionary lights, emergency lights, it's not telling you to go and left, or you go and right. You're just sitting there. I come around from the service station one time, my husband's driving, and I'm there. You just sitting with your tail in out, sitting on third street, going into the gates, is the watchman not paying attention? And open the gates so you can get all the way in? That is a double line on that road, all the way through, 35 miles an hour. Okay? People are peering around that truck trying to get through. Blessingly, it has not been your accident, but I'm looking at the conduct of Mount Air truck drivers on that road, that carries workers, moving one trailer, that's what I'm getting to, cross here, whatever, they're the ones, "How's your drive?" As I see them trucks here, "How's my drive?" Not so great. Now somebody needs to go down and observe, plenty of spaces I think you can stand and watch, because I see you. So shut down one road, make it chaotic for Raleigh Street, is redundant. So keep doing your, making it glamorous and all that. Don't let it come back to haunt you, that you made a wrong decision. You say money's not everything. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Next is Ken Smith, if you would come forward and state your address and your name, please.
Good evening, I'm Ken Smith, owner of Wilson Brothers, Operations Manager there. Our address is 20412 NC 902 Highway in Bear Creek, North Carolina, 27207. We contract with Mount Air to haul their live birds. We pretty much haul in about 80 loads a day inside into that plant. So we cross third street somewhere around, around 300 times. We have to get on that road, we have to cross it to the way birds hit and out. I've actually hauled into that complex myself, I'm a C D L driver. So I haul in and out of that complex myself. It is a huge, unsafe trying to get in and out, especially during the busy times of the day itself. I agree with Mount Air, for a safety reason. If it's nothing but safety, it needs to be redirected where our trucks, their trucks, all the contract carriers that are coming in, getting the grass poultry out of there, can move around without worrying about hitting someone or somebody getting hit. But we agree, Wilson Brothers agrees, that that third street should be redirected.
Thank you.
The manager and I just realized, if we didn't adopt those rules that I went through during the middle of that page, and just to support the board for the record, I'd like for the board to adopt those. I don't think it's affected anything so far, in terms of, I don't think anybody's got over five minutes.
Quick motion of doctor procedure rules presented. Would you agree?
Senator? Thank you.
Okay, next person is Jimmy P... Jimmy, there it goes. If you'll state your name and address, please, thank you.
My name is Andrew Hugh, like 331 West Street, South City, with Coke, 7344. 663 Third Door 24. It may be just me, but I don't know, but the more we talk, the more confused this whole situation gets. To me, what I have about this is, it's a whole lot of after talk should have been talked about before all this happened. Okay? And to me, the studies, traffic studies, impact studies, should have been presented to the board, to the town, not that it wasn't, I don't know, I'm just a concerned citizen. But I have seen, it's not, it should have been presented to them to look at, but now, you know, I got to the point, before you thought, before anybody started feeling any of that, I know we've come to this size, we take studies, we take traffic studies, we take impact studies, we take growth studies. So to me, why somebody didn't know what was coming down the road? Why you didn't know that this street, that all these small businesses were going, you want to fold it down? You should have knew this and presented this before you even acted, even begin to invest in Mount Air. Okay? But who have got the most to lose here? Because no matter what, from my eyes, my point of view, Mount Air is going to be all right. But can you guarantee me, any of these small businesses that've been here for years, put their sway into their business, funded it all year, all year, can you guarantee me that they not going to suffer? You know, not unless you, but we know the past. But we know the past. And you learn from your past. Okay? And our past tell us that when you close a street down briefly, how it impacted all the small business. I've talked to several of them. I've talked to several of them, and nobody I've talked to does good while you're closing. You are dealing with families, employees with families. So it's just not, just a little handful of people. And they have contributed to Silver City to all of us. They have been a small business based facility for years and years. I didn't have said it much either. And I know these businesses, I'm a move, trying to do better. But you gonna come in here now and upset the whole family. No guarantees that, once you close this street, that they gonna flourish. No, they not gonna flourish. They did in the past, they're not gonna do it now. Unless you can guarantee something different than what happened before. So now everybody's telling me, all I'm hearing is, it's done deal, it's done deal, it's all over. Why they have, why they have that feeling? Why that town not told it?
That's right.
Okay? But to me, the people that support you all these years, they not for you. Now you gonna turn your back to some degree on them and say, you on your own. You swimming around? That is not right. I think as intelligent people, with all the scientific stuff you have, you could take a more practical way to solve this so-called problem. But I haven't seen way with the problem yet. If you had some studies to back up this traffic, oh, you know, like you have it, we have it. And that, you know, we have had, um, teen traffic violation, wrecks, whatever, in that particular area, okay? But if that was the case, before you put this, walk, walk over the road, you should have been telling them that. You need to close this road too. Small business, you know, whatever, you, you make it a guy. So somebody needs to have a little consideration, compassion for your small business. So they have been that for years. So won't you be that for them? But then don't forget who you came to dance with.
The next person is Donald, and I'm not sure who said the last name. Correct. Sir, there's a sign up sheet.
My name is Martin George, help me here, you're right.
Sir, I don't think you were signed up to speak, you would need to sign up under the other votes.
Okay, may I sign up?
Yes, you may, if the board is open to that. Where's, where's Donald?
Where's Donald?
Yeah, Donald's next. Well, you need to sign right there, sir. If you don't mind. Sign your name, address, and...
Mr. Sampson, Mayor Pro T M, Donald Sampson.
Hold on just a second.
Could you put the little map back up there? The little map like this?
I'm trying to get it, hold on a second.
First, if you hear me, that is enough, we're yelling.
Now Barbara Sampson, we own property, uh, two pieces of property on Third Street. That we rent to families that run businesses. Can you hear me? Can anybody hear us?
I can't, I can't see the name, I'm sorry.
We, we haven't been able to hear you.
I didn't see the last name, I'm sorry.
Sampson, Barbara Donald Sampson. We own, we own two businesses, a building's a property on Third Street. That we lease to two different people. And one of them is the very last building you'll see with the green roof up there, where they gonna dead end. Could the street stop right there? And my concern is, what are they gonna do if people come down there? How do they, what do they do, back into our parking lot to turn around? I mean, there's a carter sack at the other end of Third Street. And I don't understand why there's a carter sack there and not one here, if they gonna close the street. And, uh, you know, I, it's gonna kill our, our garage people.
So you own the garage?
We own the building, we lease it to that garage, and we own the one on the other side, um, is Third Street, all together.
Okay.
And we lease it to these people, and they've been there a long time.
Right.
Now, I, I probably gonna lose my Jenna in the end building, because he'll get no traffic. It's gonna cut him completely off. So we're totally opposed to closing Third Street.
Thank you. Does anyone say anything?
It's my understanding that the trip down here would be wasted. That there are years, there not gonna be others for the small business that in my life, often still, like we might have a good investment. Now it's fixed to cut the ingress, degress on the property in half. Which will affect tenants, the building, like a living, and I do. And it's that same way, we're all the way across there, that seven businesses will get hurt. Would like me to consider our quit.
Thank you. Mayor Pro T M. We have a few other people that I think want to sign up, if the board is open to that. Can we take a, can we take a five minute break and let everybody do that? Sure. Let's take a five minute break. Anyone? Anyone that wants to sign up to speak for this public hearing, please step forward and sign up.
Tell that Jennifer, do you think we put it right here or on the podium? Right here? You do it right here.
Thank you.
That shot is always a kill.
Yeah, for two. I know, well.
Well, I just, uh, count this one. Oh, yeah, alright. I didn't know if I had to sign up to answer or raise your...
Different, like lots and...
Come on, that's the board. Sam, you're nice, big, earrings. What's box his last name, Sam? Aaron. And, uh, Matt.
Yeah, I have earrings.
Yes. Just now, ladies.
Alright, man, how you doing?
I'm good.
Good. I got my beard moving, good. If you, if you got that mop and bag, bro, we got a problem.
If anyone else would like to sign up to speak, please come down to the front. One final call, if you'd like to speak during this public hearing, please come see me down front. Got some more people to sign up? Thank you. And we're back in session. We would like to start back with Bobby Steele. Bobby's here, come up and, um, state your address and your name, please.
Good afternoon, come on, have a ball here, me. Anyway, Bobby Steele, nine oh one, East Third Street, Silver City, North Carolina, two seven three four four. And you had the Matt McPorter there. Um, I'm also known as Water Wash Laundry and Hometown Cleaners, right head center of Mount Air property. Um, I'll just direct my concerns directly to my property. Um, just so you'll kind of get an idea, the business is well established. I've been there for nineteen and a half years, so we're, we're going well, and hope to continue to do so. But, uh, I, I've been here in safety issues, and I've been here in muplication and, um, Mount Air's concerned. I think it's verified, safety is number one, muplication, anything makes Silver City look, um, presentable, I'm all for. And with that in mind, I was just, I guess I was thinking, I guess there's a few things that Mount Air might have overlooked. That's what I wanted to address today with, uh, my concern for my business. Um, I currently have three roadrunners. Roadrunner on the rear, roadrunner on the side, right side, roadrunner in front. I currently have entrances, front and rear. Um, I currently have roughly, my traffic count, I should know, I guess it's around forty-two hundred potential customers every day. So with the redirection, this is where I think something has overlooked. With the redirection, I'll have one roadrunner. I have two roadrunners taking away. I'll no longer have a rear entrance, I'll have a front entrance. And I'll have zero potential customers to pass by my business. So my question to the board and to the Mount Air is, do you think this is an appreciation property? And it's not a trick question, it's, is, is this an appreciation property? And just to address to the board, I have not been contacted by Mount Air in reference to, you know, you know, uh, that they don't appreciate it. They've looked at everything else that appears, um, muplication, safety, but there are about three or more properties there that will be greatly appreciated. And I attest to that. And I invested seven hundred and fifty thousand back in two thousand and six. I invested another two hundred and forty thousand about four years ago for new equipment. I'm concerned appreciation of my property when I have forty-two hundred potential customers. And the way the redirection goes, puts me on a dead end street with zero. And I'm in real estate also, and everybody knows in real estate, location, location, location. You know, about as close to sixty-four as you can get, about paying a million dollar fee for a million dollar price tags property. And put me on a dead end street, I just greatly hurt business. And I'm looking forward to taking consideration. If something was to come up between me and Mount Air, I'd have a reconsideration than right now. I would be opposed due to the depreciation of property. And I have not been contacted by Mount Air to address that situation.
Thank you. Alright, the next person is Crystal. I'm not sure if I can pronounce her last name, but Crystal, do you have a phone number? Tell us your name and address, please.
I'm Crystal, and it's my pleasure to talk to you. We are at the thirty-two twenty-two East Third Street, on Silas City. Um, you know, we just want to thank you guys for a lot of time today on behalf of our business. We own the Quidway Mart, also known as the Exxon, that is right at the corner of Third and South. A family has owned and operated this business here in South Dakota for fourteen years. We love this community and all the people in it. And when construction originally started, that closed off our street for the better of the year, it drastically hurt people. We understand, at that time we had to separate the beach and we looked for some deposit and place to get people. Unfortunately, now, once again, this supposed to be permanent business traffic and the ease that my customers currently have to come and go from the business. The impact to my business potentially anywhere between thirty and forty percent revenue. Which is huge for my small business alone myself. I had to adapt, we store our alcohol and our alcohol here. Less than handful of businesses were asked about this change, while several of us were out of the loop. We're right at that quarter at the end, and we were never asked, we were never brought into any conversation about how it impacted our business.
You're at the corner of the line, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
So no one ever come and asked?
No one ever asked us. And like many of the other people who spoke upon their businesses, it drastically impacted the flow of traffic that comes to us. Additionally, the approved change by the N C P O T about the superhighway added multiple mediums down Highway sixty-four, which your customers constantly do in our multiple. And it would close off the western traffic that we currently get. So not only is it closing off the traffic that's coming in from Third Street, it kind of closed off the other traffic as well. Many folks don't want to come down the highway, just come into the gas stations or whatever you can. Simply put, we feel like, you know, we'll still have highway traffic, but many of the out-of-town customers stop by to purchase gas only. And I'm not sure if many of you know, but for a gas station, we don't actually make a lot of money on gas. We make money off the local community that comes in and purchases either inside. We barely rate even on gas. Our regular customers are Silas City residents, and they're the ones that actually keep the lights on, they're the ones that help us employ local residents outside of city. We try to get back to the community by only hiring people that are actually located in the city. Overall, we don't feel that this change is necessarily beneficial for the community, but rather a convenience for a multi-billion dollar company. It aligns their bottom, their bottom line, but it drastically impacts my business so hard. We genuinely want what is best for this community, but again, this is a financially driven change, not rather the community benefit. In conclusion, we just hope that the commissioners consider and acknowledge the drastic impact that it kind of has on small businesses and the people of this community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is, I think everybody, last name is Joyce. Would you state your name and address, please? Is it Vernon?
Vernon. I'm Vernon Joy, owner of S and J Clements, eight oh two East Third Street. I've been in Silas City for thirty-four years. And it's a difficult place to do business as a small business. I'm not against Mount Air per se. They've done a tremendous job for Silas City. They went out of their way and with the coalition, that issue. I think they want to be an excellent participant of Silas City, but so does small business. I have asked many people to give me a positive response for this towards small business. I know it will benefit Mount Air, but what about small business? The route for rescue fire is direct now. With these changes, it's going to slow down the response time. It's not going to help small business. Can I just hear you stand up for small business?
Thank you. You laugh, and the next person's last name is, is it Branch?
Yes.
Can't read your first name, so. If you would state your name and address, please.
Yes ma'am, can you all hear me? My name is Solon Branch. And I live at one oh three North Tenth Avenue. And just a point of reference, that is Tenth Avenue and not Tenth Street. I think you all have it Tenth Street on your relocation concept drawing. And that's only important because of the rear is a Tenth Street in Silas City. I get mail with Tenth Street all the time. My question is, I think it's to either the city or the owners planners here, is the North Tenth Avenue where I live is primarily residential, very narrow street. And right now we get lots of cross traffic from Raleigh Street to Third Street. There's a lot of cross, very busy area, especially during school and during that time period. And very recently, we've had some incidences where we've had eighteen wheelers get stuck on Tenth Avenue coming in off Raleigh Street. And so my question is, with this, with this concept, I know that Third Street would be closing, but is it completely closed traffic? Meaning that will all traffic go in the in and out of Mount Air? Be permanently stopped there when they come in, or will they come in off of sixty-four? Or would there be incidences where traffic will come in off Tenth Avenue and take a right and go in somehow into an area that's not visiting for public traffic? But maybe a truck to go in through? That traffic increased on a small street is, I tell you, very harrowing at times. Is, like I said, is extremely narrow street, very difficult for two cars to pass safely on the street, let alone trucks. And I'm just concerned that trucks, other than talented, excuse me, not talented, Mount Air. Other than Mount Air trucks will come in and still use that as an ingredient to dial a sign to cut through. And it may increase eighteen wheeler traffic through there. And I don't know if the city has considered no truck signs or consoling that as a no truck zone. It is definitely residential, very small lane, they're very busy. And I just think that needs to be a consideration towards a residential on Tenth Avenue.
Thank you. The next person, last name is, is it Jackson? Is it Mary?
Mary.
Oh, thank you. Sorry, I can't. If you would state your name and address, please.
My name is Mary Jackson. I live at six twenty-five East Third Street, Silas City, North Carolina. As I kind of listened, with respect to Mount Air and all the businesses that are on East Third Street, I am, can you hear me? Do I need to turn it on?
Little bit closer, Miss Mary.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Alright, wonderful. Should I repeat my name again? Now you, oh, okay. I'm listening, and like I said, with respect to Mount Air and all of the businesses that are on six twenty-five, on East Third Street, rather. I've been living there for thirty-six, well, thirty-seven years now as a resident. I don't own a business or anything, but I'm a resident. And I'm not sure exactly how many residents, because when I first moved into the area, it was planned a residential area when I purchased the home. Now it's been changed to, I think, commercial or residential commercial. And so my concern is, as a resident, okay, delivering all of the businesses or whatever, what about our water and other things that we have to? And we're in the aging population. What happens to all of that whenever all the changes are made to benefit businesses? That's my question. As a resident and future, maybe that might be small to you, but it's great to me.
Thank you. The next person, Janet. If you would state your name and address, please.
Janet Amenes, San Jose Center, Streetside City, North Carolina. I wanted to say good afternoon to the town Silas City Commissioners and also the staff and as well as Mount Air. I want to start by saying thank you for the jobs that you provided, but I'm against the closing of First Street. I'm a twenty-year resident, more than twenty years. I grew up in Silas City. I've been here, I've been here during the traffic jams that occurred during Raleigh Street, wherein the students are coming out of, uh, down Tenth Avenue, down the road from this. I was part of a jam not too long ago. The easiest way to get out of those jams is look through North Adams, turn to East Third, and go out to sixty-four. With the closing of First Street, you're costing us to go out that way, turn back off, and then turn again. Or come back to Eighth Street and go all the way down to the laundry man or the cleaner, that's always farther off the road. I say that because I have two children, my own that goes to school here and a stepson that goes to Pittsburgh. For personal reasons, I have to travel every other week all the way to Pittsburgh, sorry, I'm married. But I have to travel to Pittsburgh and I have not much time to get there. I don't want to speed because I also have family to maintain and tickets nowadays are very expensive, I think, from insurance. By you closing Third Street, you're costing me to, if there's a jam, you're prolonging my travel time to get to pick up my stepson or my first that come pick up my son from his activity. I don't know how many of you are parents, but I'm one of them. I also want to reiterate, like, repeat and strongly instructed the first person to say so, that it's important that you guys see the traffic and how it flows and how you better serve the residents. Not just benefit your company or whatever you guys accomplish by closing the street. We have been here through the ups and downs of the town. Whenever the last concrete plant closed, the East Third businesses and every other old business that we have in town are the ones that helped the town survive during that depression. So I'm very thankful for them. And when you guys closed on your previous street closing that was longer than what you guys anticipated, which is understandable, because my favorite residents are those now. Because of there was no more traffic coming down the road, and it was spectacular. The other thing I would want you to consider is that you are not using three streets. You would have East Raleigh Street or your employees who would not care if you're coming up that street, they just jump in front of you. And if you're not a cautious driver, then there's, there's bounty and activity, and that's where the jams are. You're using Third Street that you're planning to close, and then your trucks are still coming in through the new Third Street, which like the first person said or stated, their reckless drivers is not something that you can't change. And that is three streets that you guys are using. You're cutting our entrance to downtown. And as employees in downtown, you should guys really consider that, not only for the benefit of the town, but also the community that's been here during the ups and downs. Thank you, I hope you guys have a great time.
Thank you very much.
I have a question, sorry. You guys were, when you started talking about this, you guys said that you were guys in economic impact, and I have not seen any in your practice. And I would want to know that if the commissioners have seen anything, because I think that's very important for our downtown.
Alright, and the last person, is it Hania Beni? Did I say your name correctly?
No, you're good.
I'm sorry. If you would say it correctly and tell us your answer.
Hi, good evening everyone, my name is Hania Beni. I am a resident of East Raleigh Street in downtown, and I also work here in Silas City. I am also a Silas City, not born, but raised. I graduated to A M, Chad Middle, and Silas City Elementary. My input is going to what everybody has said. Your organization has so many tools that are just all over. You might not hear, do you aware of that, but I really do think that you guys can have the opportunity to do more research in terms of impact that you guys have been having for small towns. Similar to the sentiment of our other residents, Silas City has gotten a lot of changes. And things like this, it's going to impact a lot of families. I have three children, I literally, my family lives down the road on Tenth Avenue. My mother lives in just the trailer park, which is down from Mount Air Farms, and we always, passing that increase, we may have argued for it. The fact of using these laws and firing employees, I think needs to be an improvement in that area. Because that road really caused so many accidents, and then once you start seeing more traffic, but I think East Raleigh has more potential of an accident versus East Third Street that I have not heard something about. I have not seen, you know, any exposure of accidents, at least for knowledge, because Silas City is a small town, as soon as something crashes, everybody comes out. Because it's either the social media or somebody says, there's an accident, that's why you split. To my knowledge, I have not heard any of that. And I figured to use water, like, I moved, I used to was close nearby. But I still use the businesses that are in those areas. And let's say from where I'm going there, it, let's say on this side of town, it might be just a few of those, but then while I'm watching, I literally want to go ahead and take advantage of the parents. But like everybody says, you have to do tours to try to get to the other areas of town. It's a big inconvenience. And I, my recommendation would really be use the tools that maybe you guys don't know about. And research for those tools to really figure out different ways to help our community, our current come to come again. You know, Mount Air really wants to be a good neighbor to the residents of Silas City, and it is, and I am hopeful that you guys can use that to really turn around and, like the public said, you know, create a new generation in our town and commissioners. create a new generation in our town and Commissioners. Uh, certainly that's one of these great questions that we appreciate that. I think that, um, the reports that you guys have provided to them, I think it's also important that you guys provide to the residents to explain it. Uh, that way we can, um, also feel comfortable in terms of any decision you guys make.
Thank you. Appreciate your speaking. So we have eleven people speaking in our public hearing. And out of the eleven, ten were against. One was for. And ten had a Silver City address.
Not someone from the company, Mike. Wanted to speak again.
Who wanted to speak? Okay.
You know, uh, certainly hear your concerns and, uh, want to make sure that you guys know.
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta get closer to it.
Yeah.
At the last meeting that we were able to present to you guys, you expressed some concerns about, uh, Fifth Street or that, right? Um, here today, we, we address that, right? Uh, I would say that some of the concerns that I've heard tonight, we'll do our best to address them. To me, you are our customer, the community, and where we can work to address them, we will. Um, on Raleigh Street, and I understand your concern there. We're technical people, we're not, uh, traffic experts. So we went through that and the Department of Transportation and a third-party consultant that this group recommended. And they said we didn't need to do that. So we, we remember that. However, if we need to put in a term name, we can do that. If you guys want to call this out, we can do that. I would say, I don't think from what I've heard tonight, that the current situation is advantageous to some of the businesses here too. When you talk about forty-two-hundred tenth of customers a day, those customers are having to fight four-hundred-and-sixty-four trucks a day passing too. So I think that's a challenge. So how might we better remedy that? I think we're coming to the table. We try to respond to any concerns you've had. We'll work to respond, um, to any humans, we'll try to make the situation better. I guess the second question is about this team right here, I think. You've got a much better job than answering some crap.
I, I don't know if the board is planning on when you may close the public hearing. We can talk more about that, but don't do it yet because, okay, Jack is, uh, needs... Roy can probably describe it, explain this better to me.
Yes, we had, uh, discussed earlier about what the next steps look like for the board and how to move forward. So Jack is going to present what that is and then William can give further instruction on, uh, as to if the board wants to close the public hearing and, uh, what, what the next step.
Thank you, Roy. Board again, um, staff provided a, uh, quick list of, uh, next steps on page sixty-four. I'll run through those right quick. The board is going to take action. These, these are the things to consider. Consider adopting a declaration of retention of easements specifically describing such easements, those being either utility, drainage, pedestrian, landscaping, conservation, or other easements considered by the town to be in the public interest, both public and private. We talked about those a little bit at the beginning because we've already sent a declaration letter to Mount Airhead. Next, uh, as a, a part of this, uh, discussion, consider that the road closure is not contrary to the public interest or to the rights of individuals owning property abutting or in the vicinity of the closure. And consider it does not interfere with ingress and egress. Consider adopting an order permanently closing the subject street. And as a part of the process, if there was a decision to close it, persons agreed by closing may appeal an order of general court of justice within thirty days after its adoption. So that's, that's sort of the full process. Um, one other thing that, uh, I want to add that's not in here, this is right out of state statute, but I, I, we feel like it's a part of, if the board was to consider adopting an order permanently closing subject streets, that, uh, there are benefits and conditions listed. And, uh, that's something that we would need some guidance on if we wanted to make that a part of that order. What conditions the board could like to consider. There have, there is so in your packet that was suggested by, uh, local property owner. Staff has put together some conditions. As I've been listening and, and staff has been listening to comments over the last two or three years, we've been writing those down, so I've got those available. I wrote some down this evening as well. But that's pretty much, uh, next steps. Uh, of course, there are many more steps after that. Uh, as you can tell, uh, once, once you establish the, uh, approval of the order, uh, we've, we've got DOT involvement, um, because there, there's a real, uh, relocation in this section. There's going to be construction drawings and such that need to be reviewed by the town and DOT. Uh, they, they come later on if it is approved. So, um, I don't know how far we want to go into that, but that, that's, there's many other measures, if, if it was approved. Um, but staff is seeking that direction. There's no reason to provide direction to move forward. And that, that'd be where staff goes with that or, um... And, and no decision has to be made conceiving. Continue the public hearing if we needed to. We can close the public hearing. That, that's all to the board.
Jack, I got a question on the wording of two B. Do, do, do both prongs have to be met or just one prong?
I, I believe it's both.
So that would be an "and" instead of an "or"?
Yeah, and, and it should be an "and".
Because it said "or".
Come on. B and C, two B and C?
Yeah, two B. Consider the, that the road closure is not contrary to the public interest. It says "or" to the rights of individuals owning property abutting in the vicinity. So the way I read it as written, there could be a finding...
I see what you're saying, Mark.
Yeah. So there's supposed to be an "or" in it.
Maybe a "or". I'm gonna read the, the statute prong on page, it's on page sixty-five.
Or should it be that, that it's a "neither"? Consider closures neither contrary to the public interest or the rights? Because the way it's written, you could... It, it could be contrary to the rights of an individual, but not contrary to the rights of the public in general.
Here's how it's written in the statute. It's, uh, in that first paragraph on page, on page sixty-five. At the hearing, any person may be heard on the question of whether or not the closing would be detrimental to the public interest or the property rights of any individual. That, that would be the way it should be. We may have reformatted that in a way that put it in that list.
Okay.
Did you see it, uh, in that section?
I did.
I, I think maybe we should follow that language, the way it's written there, rather than...
Because in the statute, it, it appears as though it's a, a double prong has to be met. But when we translated it, it seems like we lost the double prong.
I, I feel like it's both. William, I would lean on William for that.
Well, I agree that we need to, we need to, we need to follow the statute, not how it's paraphrased, this right.
And that's why, I, I, and that's why I'm asking, because I want to be consistent with the legal statute. And on two D, no, two C. Ingress and egress to where? To the streets, to businesses, all of the above?
In the statute, it says that...
I see it.
No individual owning property in the vicinity of the street or alley or subdivision in which it is located would be deprived of reasonable means of ingress and egress to his property.
The key word there being reasonable.
Yes.
Okay, because we left out the reasonable is compelling. No more questions.
So I, I just, I just have one question. Um, so when, when we're, we're talking, I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm completely clear. If, if, if the vote is to close this section of Third Street, Third Street will be rerouted, North Avenue will become Third Street. So Third Street would, that, that would be... The ingress and egress in the town would be, that would no longer be North Avenue, it would be Third Street. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's been the interpretation, especially the DOT and, and staff had. Ultimately, the decision is up to the town board with the name of the street. So, uh, we would probably make that a part of this process. It should be East Third, it's, it's named in East Third.
That's East Third, yeah. And then, and, and then if, if that portion is closed, the new portion will be opened before the, the old portion will be closed. Is that, is that how that would?
That's a condition that I believe you, that's one of those conditions I think the board should consider if we decide. Yes, sir.
The board will have, need to have before a resolution. It's my understanding that that's not the resolution. Right, the resolution is not before you tonight because we needed the feedback, if any. Right, the conditions, you know, before we draft, because there's conditions that want to be listed in the, in the resolution. And we can have that ready. It doesn't mean that you report or adopt it, of course. Uh, but it's not ready tonight because we needed to have this discussion first. So that raises questions whether or not you want to close the public hearing because when we bring this resolution back and it has all these conditions and other considerations in it, it might prompt you to ask questions of Mount Airhead or, or, or Jack or someone else or anyone else. Um, and if you close the public hearing, you're on your own then. I mean, you can talk, talk to Jack and staff, but, eh, it's the next meeting, so...
I, if, if we're gonna, I, I would recommend that we, that we recess the public hearing and then reopen it at a time to be determined, once we have all the feedback and, and everything that we need.
Right. You would need to recess it to a date and time certain, or, or we have to re-advertise.
Yeah, and, and, and location, we need to be conscious of that as well.
I, I, I agree with Bill. I think it should recess it because I've also heard, uh, s- some of the concerns that citizens have spoken today. And I've also heard Mount Airhead say they are going to look and see if they can do something about that. So that's sort of an open-ended thing. I'd like to see where that discussion leads us to. So I think the recess is the proper thing to do if it's done.
I agree because I've had several people say they would like to attend and obviously they didn't get the notice that it was. So that would give other people a chance to come out and speak for or against it, I think.
So if you will leave the public hearing under the motion to recess, at least to be to a date and time and place. Because I don't think we'll be, I guess, with school, you know, I don't, I don't, if we come back here, I don't know.
I've got a, Jack and, uh, I've got a specific concern on statutory obstruction. Uh, not quite sure how to address it. But maybe it can be addressed during a recess with more information brought back. But in one sixty-eight, two nine-nine A, about midway down. Um, and I, I've touched on this. I just want to flush it out so that, you know, my concern is on the record. Um, at any hearing a person may, is directly out of statute. At a hearing, any person may be heard on the question of whether or not the closing would be detrimental to the public interest or the property rights of any individual. And then there's period. And we've, we've had evidence on, on both. And then it goes, if it appears to the satisfaction of counsel after the hearing that the closing in the street or alley is not contrary to the public interest and that no individual owning property in the vicinity of the street or alley in the subdivision in which it is located would thereby be deprived of reasonable means of ingress and egress to his property, the council may adopt an order of closing the street or alley. And so we've heard from, uh, three individuals addressing their, uh, the ingress and egress, or as they put it, the access to their property. We even haven't had any discussion with case law deemed to be reasonable. So kind of like some input on that. Because it, it, if, if we do reading the statute, it is clear that there's a double prong that's to be met. You know, we need, we haven't had, although we've had discussion on the lack of ingress and egress, we haven't had any discussion on what is considered reasonable. I don't know if there's any case law on that.
I'm, I'm fairly certain there is and I can pull together a short memorandum with, with the record that can summarize some of those things.
Because we need to be, uh, we need to be on sound footing when compared to the statute, I think.
Okay. I can't quote the cases to you now, but I...
Oh, I know, I know, and I'm not asking you to.
Oh, okay.
But that's just, when I read it, that's kind of my take.
Emily, may I approach you? I will say that we can try to have the meeting here again, but we would have to check with their schedule. Um, so I mean, if you want to list this location as the first priority date and the library as the second priority date, I mean, what do you think, William?
I'm, I just go to getting ready to start that, so...
You can all, well, you can have a hearing set for, in fact, we've done this before. It's been a long time here in Silver City, but you can have a public hearing, um, to commence, you know, the notice says it's going to be at Town Hall, uh, in the case I'm remembering. And then due to, we didn't know how many people might show up. So due to the number, it was moved here. That was about fifteen years ago, so you can have it, uh...
First day is twenty-third.
What?
First day of school is twenty-third.
So you can set it, it recommence here or at the library, uh, or anywhere really. But move it from that location to an alternative one if you have one locked up and you have overwhelming numbers and you can't handle it. And I've kind of slipped my mind a little bit in the library now, so that's not going to be too conducive to, uh, what's likely to be the attendance.
Well, what you said is we, if we set it for the library and we determine at that time, we can recess it there and then reconvene here in fifteen minutes later. Give people time.
That's appropriate, yes.
Yeah, then maybe what we have to do is do that because we won't know until at least tomorrow if we can...
Correct.
Get this. So, yeah, I'd be fine.
You have any better options?
Well, I, I will say that that would be pretty difficult for staff to, to leave the library in fifteen minutes. and fifteen minutes later, the room look like this. So, um, that, that would be a little challenging.
Well, I, I think, I think that, you know, not knowing that we can get it, perhaps we will know tomorrow. But if we were to say that we convene to the library and when people show up to the library, we, we, that, that we reconvene and we recess it, we're reconvening at George Matthews Auditorium. We already have it set up.
And, and also keep in mind that one of the reasonable, uh, limitations you can put, as I went over at the beginning, um, and this is out of, uh, GS one sixty-eight dash eighty-one. Provided, providing for the selection of delegates from groups of persons supporting or opposing the same decision when the number of persons wishing to attend the hearing exceeds the capacity of the hall. So, in this case, circumstances we're in, you know, you're in a small room. So, it might be somewhat cumbersome, but we could keep it below the power of the capacity for the room by... And that's one of the ways you can do it, is have people, if we have to have it there, you know, have delegates of, you know, those in opposition, uh, those in favor, uh, the applicant team. You know, you could, we could, we could handle it that way legally because of this statutory provision.
Okay, um, we need, we're to, Roy, to, reasons. We try to give a specific date, time, and location. Uh, need a motion to do that and then wait...
How, how much length? I mean, because we're, we're, we're talking about a date here. We have, we have a meeting on the sixteenth already. Um, we, the sixth, we would probably move it to, I think it's for the seventh anyway because that's later than that.
How about date for September?
That's for September, yes. We have one, we have one additional meeting in August. Um, I mean, are we, we talking, what, what is, what, what time does staff need to bring back the recommendations? Are we talking two weeks? Are we talking that we need to find another date in, um, in August? Or is the seventh, September, and September?
William.
Can you maybe get all the children here?
No, sorry.
No, I'm not, I'm not recording. Can we get this in?
I love that.
Yeah.
I have a concern, though. I mean, we, this is our only regular scheduled meeting and we only get Mount Air. So, if we keep just doing this one issue, we're going to back off other issues. So, I think we need to look at a special date. Can we convene this, not on, not, so not on the sixth, but I would say maybe a Tuesday. Not the sixteenth because that's our regular day. Maybe the nineteenth or the twenty-third, or maybe you look at, uh, the twenty-fourth or something, seventeen. Once again, it depends on when staff can get things back to us. I don't want to really kick...
I can't, I can't meet on the tenth or seventeen, uh, to be available for the, on the twenty-fourth.
You mean, how long do you think it's taking to do that research on?
Not very long.
Okay.
A couple of days at most. And I don't know, I'm looking for Jack about the resolution. He's put that together pretty quick, Rod. We can collaborate, so...
I've got templates already.
Eighteenth is a Wednesday. I mean, I'm okay with that, but that's just...
You're welcome.
How's the twenty-fourth look?
There are five Mondays in, in August. Um, so, I mean, you know, staff is available. They should be on the twenty-third or the thirtieth of August if y'all wanted to set a special meeting date.
I would just say the twentieth, the twenty-third is, is the first day of school. That, that sort of puts this place out on the twenty-third.
What about the twenty-fourth?
I, I'd be fine.
August thirtieth?
October thirtieth.
Are you good?
Yeah.
So, you, the motion be the, 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 well, whatever, the, the date and time, and be the library. And then you say we have a alternate location here needed.
But, but it's like he said, we can have people come and have...
Okay, that's, that's... Yeah, William, what would happen, what would happen if we, you know, we reset, we were to say we recess it until August thirtieth at six-thirty P.M. at the, um, yeah, the library. And between now and then, we know that this, that this place is, uh, available. And were we to, were we to publicize that we're going to open the meeting there and then, um, move over here? Is that, is, is that the legal?
Yes, that's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. It's okay to have, uh, the alternate site if available and if the library is too full, too many people show up.
When we advertise it?
We'll be advertised. It doesn't have to be advertised.
So, we can make, we, the motion, the motion could be that the, the primary site would be the library. Alternate site would be here for the same date, time?
Yes.
Okay. Then I'll, I'll make a motion that we recess the public hearing until Monday, August thirtieth at six-thirty P.M., the primary location of the, the Silver City Library, the alternate location of, uh, George Matthews Auditorium.
Is that right?
On the paper. Um, any questions?
I, I think that's good. Uh, we'll need to start it at the library.
That's right.
Then we'll, I know, okay. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, own business. New business.
There is one.
Managers report.
Uh, I did want to bring the board up to date on a couple of items that we have. We've had some questions on Fifth Street, uh, where we are. Uh, and, and that was due to the repairs to be completed from the scene. Uh, we have now, um, finally reached the point that the design of that repair would be complete on the sixth of August. The bidders will be invited to come and ask questions on August the eleventh. We will receive bids on the twenty-sixth, um, of August. And then the contract will be presented to the board on September the seventh. At that point, we are looking at thirty to forty-five days for completion. So, we are looking at that road being open mid-October to the end. I think with the situation that we were in and how the road actually caved in, we were, we were able to work that out and get it, uh, we'll, we'll have it back open in October. Also, in front of you as well, you have a timeline for the redistricting and the redrawing of the maps. Uh, this is from Deborah Stangber with Arrington Smith, our attorney's out of Raleigh. And that just states on October the fourth will be the initial meeting to review the census data as presented. On November the first will be the second meeting to present and review. Then on November the fifteenth, that is the anticipated date, uh, we will hold a public hearing concerning the redraw of the districts. And then on December the sixth will be the final meeting to adopt the revised districts. So, we will keep you up to date on that as well moving forward. Also, the last item I wanted to bring to the board, I know we've been talking a lot about the A.R.P. funding that we were anticipating that would be received. And on Friday, we did receive our first payment for this year in the amount of one million, three hundred and ten thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars. So, uh, we've had a number of discussions about how we are going to appropriate, uh, these funds. So, what Tina and Nancy Hannah and I have been looking at is bringing some recommendations back to the board based upon the guidelines that have been given as well for these funds to be spent or how they're supposed to be spent. So, hopefully, we can get some of this underway. I know we have a number of projects and, uh, as Commissioner Fainley mentioned earlier about us only having one meeting in, in August that's going to have a lot on it. So, the sixteenth is going to be very heavy. This will be part of those discussions as well. That is all I have, Mayor Portier, for you.
Um, does anyone here have anything to say? I, I would just like to say that I appreciate everything that town and staff is doing. How you look around and, and they're cleaning up the redways, they're cleaning up. I just think that people put stuff out and they get it, you know, and just, it's gone by the time they put it out. And I think that's, um, something to be said for the people, for, for the town. I, I'd like to say that we appreciate what they do and we think they're doing a good job. And, uh, you know, they have limitations. I know that, uh, where they're at now with the grant license and the water department, that they're all doing a good job. And I, I just want me to remind them that we appreciate what they do. Are you stationed?
No, ma'am.
Is my mother home? You have anybody? All in place?